Oh, there's Tim. Hi, Tim. All right, so we can get started. Um, so welcome to the July 20th, 2020 meeting of the Northbrook Field School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by Northbrook Field LPAC and is being broadcast via Zoom. Mr. Lind also has a statement to read.
I do, I have to call it up. Totally forgot about that, we've been in this habit now. All right. Got it. Sorry. Okay, so my statement. Now I'm going to begin a remote meeting for these. A video communication is important that we continue to respect the privacy and confidentiality of the members of our school community, including teachers and staff and us families. By participating in this remote meeting today, you agree that you will not save or record, share, or post the session or any photos from the session. I also will not be saving or recording or sharing this session, this meeting, as Mrs. Tucker said, is being recorded and will be posted by the Northbrook Field LPAC. If you don't agree to these rules, please disconnect from the session now. Sorry, I was unprepared.
No worries. Um, so thank you and glad to see some members of the staff and parents are joining us because this is a meeting where we're going to be talking about some stuff for the upcoming year. Uh, but first we have recognition for Jake Sandrovich, and if I pronounce your name right this time. So Jake was the past school year's Project 351 representative for Northbrook Field. And Jake, if you want to unmute yourself and tell us a little bit about your experience and what were the highlights for you?
Um, okay. So hi, everyone. Um, I put together a slide presentation
Oh, nice.
for this meeting. Um, Mr. Lynn, do you have that?
Maria, can you make me the host again?
Sure.
The host when I had to leave.
Okay. Um, so I've never done that before. Do I just? There you go. Well, that was easy. Okay.
All right, so I'm going to share Jake's screen because he did a little presentation for everyone. Uh, let's see, can you see that? I hope you guys can see this.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jake, tell me, you, you just give me that cue, Jake, when you want me to go forward.
All right. Um, so this presentation is Project 351 at Home by me, Jake Sandrovich. Um, next slide, please. Um, so if you're wondering what Project 351 is, it is a nonprofit organization that builds a movement of youth-led service by engaging an ambassador of each, from each Massachusetts 351 towns and cities in a year of leadership and service. Um, this slide is just showing how this presentation is broken up along with a picture from launch day 2020. Um, next slide, please. So what I expected. Um, at the end of 2019, when I was told that I would be Northbrook Field's 2020 Ambassador, I really did not know what to, what was going to come. Um, I did know that I would be doing some service projects. Um, and on the days leading up to launch day, I was a bit overwhelmed and nervous, but also excited. And the people that were running the calls were very enthusiastic about meeting all the ambassadors. Um, next slide, please. So the reality, um, January 18th was launch day and the weather that day was going to be bad. So we left the bus station knowing we might have to come home a bit early. Um, when we got to Faneuil Hall, the number of people was very overwhelming. And we listened to some of Massachusetts' leaders, such as Governor Baker and Lauren Baker, speak about just why it's important for people in my generation to start service early. Um, next slide, please. Um, next slide, please.
Which one do you want, Jake? I, I'm on
Oh, yeah, that one.
Okay, sometimes there's a delay, sorry.
Yeah. Um, so the reality continued. Later on that day, we closed at JFK Library and they shared the numbers of people that all of us ambassadors and alumni impacted that day. Um, so the total number of children was 31,647 people that we helped in service that day. Um, and after that was spring service, I held the closing drive in the school, which was completed thankfully before school was let out for the rest of the year. Um, as the year went on, I completed an eight-week Service Leadership Academy, which I attended via Zoom, which is good because there was no worry of bad weather, getting sick. Um, and my family participated in the Hope and Gratitude Walk, which was a fundraiser to help support the Be Like Brit, No Get Hungry, and Wonderful Fund foundations. Um, so what I've learned, I've learned how different organizations such as Cradles to Crayons are supported through service. Um, I've learned how different service leaders live their lives of service. And I've also learned how to run a quality and successful service project. Um, so that's it. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
So I'm glad it was a good experience, even though obviously this year, like everything else, was very
Yeah. Yeah.
But that's great.
So, so again, Project 351 was actually started by former Governor Deval Patrick, I don't know, 10 or 12 years ago. And this brought into quite a sort of a group, an organization, they do great work. Proud of the work you did, Jake. 31,000 kids for your time that you spent on the Cradles to Crayons, a couple of hours that day?
Yeah.
Just, I guess it just reminds us how much service, how far it goes, how many lives it can impact when we focus on some service.
Yeah.
You, a service project. Other questions from the committee?
I just want to say, Jake, I am so proud of you for all the work that you did. I know I was your teacher for two years and seeing you grow and become this amazing leader, I'm, I'm so proud, my heart just swells. So congratulations, that's awesome work.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thanks a lot, Jake.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good summer, bud.
You too, thank you.
Um, is Megan with us? Megan?
Megan Bocus, she said she was going to be here, but I don't, I don't see her specifically, but Megan, if you're on, unmute yourself and jump in.
Sorry, when, when she shows up, we can get her in line. Um, so we have to approve the minutes. So I need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 8th meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the June 8th School Committee meeting.
And a second?
I guess that's me. I don't even know who's here.
Is, yeah, we're, there's you and Tim and Ruth and I are here.
Okay, I'll second.
Yeah, you're, you're seconding. And then you'll adjourn.
Yes.
Although I hate to break it to you, we have to have an executive session. Um, okay, so we had a motion in a second, all in favor of approving the minutes for the June meeting? All right, all in favor, thank you.
All right.
Um, do we have any present, any correspondence or does that come later?
Um, no, nothing under correspondence or presentations.
All right, um, I don't think we have any public participation, although we do have a lot of people visiting us this week, which is nice. Um, no school committee reports? So moving on, financial reports, Mr. Lynn, if you can give us the highlights, which are some
Well, yeah, so in your packet, you'll notice that all, nearly all of the accounts in the the operating budget are at 100% because it just turned over. So our fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th. So if you look through those accounts, you're going to see the last column, unused and, or unused and maybe used, hot in it yet, so that's in pretty good shape. In terms of the revolving accounts and grant accounts, some, I mean, these are year-round accounts. We'll see that some are closing out, like various federal grants and others are continuing on. Again, um, pretty typical standard stuff in terms of where they're at. Just as a reminder, we do, you know, lunch account is here in the revolving account and that will, if it hasn't yet, represent the reimbursement from the Municipal Cares Act funding. You know, previous, the school committee had approved 65,000 to pay the deficit that occurred over the course of the spring and through the summer with no students eating at school where we charge and that's how it funds itself. And get rid, federal reimbursement for some of the supplies that we use. But the municipal side of the Cares Act provided for $60,000, so that was a huge help to support that program in terms of keeping it operating the way it was before the pandemic, which was fantastic.
So you have, you have details about all that a little bit later on, right? You were going to go over that, or is it?
Yes, so that's in the report later on.
Okay.
All of the title grants were, have been allocated. We have to apply, so there's nothing in there for 2021. Uh, for those grants yet, although we have the allocations, they're very similar to ours here. Um, questions about either the revolving accounts or the operating budget? See, now I'll jump into that area that Mrs. Tucker just mentioned. So there are several grants that have been out there, you've heard about these before, just wanted to review them quickly.
Can you show, can you share those, so people can see them?
Yeah, me, call that up, so. So the so there have been several sort of buckets that that the federal government has put forward for coronavirus relief or the Cares Act. Um, and one was through for school districts and our allocation and it was in line with our Title I funding and it's a very complicated formula to get those percentages and what would be eligible for. But our, our allocation was $65,002. Um, and it could be spent on a variety of things to support reopening, dealing with coronavirus relief, et cetera. So the way we have gone about this is we identified about 35,000 for PPE, safety equipment and anything we might need in the building to be able to open up signage. You know, medical waiting rooms, hand sanitizer wall, you know, stations, plastic shields, things like that. And then obviously the PPE, like mask counts, et cetera. This money is good through, I believe, September of 2022. So you see the amounts there, it is a lot, but not as much as you think and it needs to last us. The other bucket of money within this bucket is to support technology. Technology played a key part in the spring, access to some of the software and applications that make sense. Our iPads were obsolete essentially, they were some of the first years created, almost, you know, 70, 90, 10 years old. So we invested in six new iPads along with cards. Those will mostly be for K2, but certainly usable at other grade levels. But a lot of the applications for the little ones are much better on an iPad than they are on a Chromebook. So that's how we kind of budgeted. Bucket number one. Bucket number two was the town was able to apply uh, for some coronavirus relief through the same federal act, but this is municipal. Um, and, and part of the municipal is the school, so we were able to put in some expenses that, that we incurred during the course of the closure and what we would need to reopen. And you can see it here, I believe, I hope everybody can still see this. It totaled $113,000 or just a little bit more than $113,000. And essentially, we could be, we're being reimbursed for the two, I call them the magic wands, that those electro fogging sprayers that disinfect large areas much more quickly than obviously spraying it and wiping it down. We, I mentioned earlier, the food services reimbursement of 60,326. We also have a technology upgrade to improve our Wi-Fi and network operations for 17,000 that we're doing this summer and our grade seven through 12 students are going one-to-one with Chromebooks. This is, this will cover, almost cover the first year of the lease. We're doing a three-year lease program with this, so every seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, we'll get a Chromebook, which is good for school anyway, but maybe especially important if we have any time outside of school in terms of remote learning. And then the last bucket is a lot of our students with special education needs, they need additional support as a result of the closure over the spring. Where maybe they didn't get the kind of services that are outlined in their IEP in every way. And, or they have fallen behind due to just sort of the model of teaching and learning we had to use during the closure. Um, and, and compensatory services are, can be pretty expensive. We have $13,693 in estimated compensatory services for a variety of related services. So this is hugely helpful for us to be able to sort of tap into the towns. Sort of the, it's through the municipal side of the Cares Act, I guess is the best way to say it.
Yeah, we're, we're, that's a, definitely was a very fortunate piece, silver lining, I don't know what you want to call it.
Yeah.
None of it's good. None of it's good, but we're, we're appreciative that the town worked with us to get that.
Yep. So there are two other buckets that we're going to be looking to pull from that are in process right now. One is called the Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant. This is a grant that will, will help us, won't pay for all of it. Buy additional devices for elementary families that do not have a device at home for students to use if we're in remote learning. It's a device they'll be able to borrow from us that won't take it off the shelf here at school. So kids who are at school will be able to use it. And, um, and the other piece to that grant is also to be able to, again, cost share, purchasing broadband internet for families that do not have it at home. Been working with some of that spectrum charter. And they do, and I finally put a program in that's available to school districts to be able to purchase and then provide to families that do not have. It's only for, it's for one year, so it would be on the family after that one year to be able to continue with. But you know, that's one bucket of money. Those grant, those applications are due tomorrow, I've already submitted ours, so it's just a matter of wait and see and see what was, what is approved. And then the last buck, oh, go ahead.
No, I just could say that would be extremely helpful, I think, if we get that.
Yeah, it'd be wonderful to be able to get that. And then the last bucket is the coronavirus relief fund, again, it's part of the Cares Act money. This was held back by the governor and he made, I think, about $190 million available. It was originally 202, but he pulled some, 10 million out or something. But about $190 million that would be distributed to school districts on a per student basis. So essentially, we, we will be eligible and it's an entitlement grant. What, $225 dollars per student, at 601 students, that comes out to approximately $135,000 that we will be receiving. This is specific to reopening. Uh, it has to be expended by, I think, December 30th, 2020. So this is about getting the building open and anything you might need. Anything from transportation to staffing to stuff. It's very open-ended, but it has to relate back to opening in COVID-19 world.
So do you anticipate using this more for like more PPE or, or?
Yeah, I would, I would anticipate that. I think one of the other areas is, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, making sure windows and HVAC systems are in good working order. Transportation, if we need additional transportation for kids, depending on what the state guidelines are on spacing on the bus. We need additional transportation. So those are the kinds of big ideas that we've sort of volleyed around a little bit, will we talk in more about in both our reentry task force as an administration? So those are the buckets of sort of coronavirus relief. Obviously, we don't know what's next. There's a lot of talk in Washington DC about another package. But who knows when and if that will come. So the larger sort of budget in the state of Massachusetts, we still have no information about Chapter 70 funding. We're hoping that we might get an inkling in the next week or so.
And that Chapter 70 is the, is the the regular school, state school, state funding that we, every year.
Yeah, so they'll identify how much funding Northbrook Field Public Schools will get from the state. Obviously, the town has approved that budget, but it's obviously dependent on, on funding from the state. So hopefully that's in line with what was approved. Uh, if it's not, we may have some, some challenges, but I think we're prepared for those. That's the financial report.
All right, thank you very much for all the work that went into getting the grants and applying for more grants. Um, you know, like I said, this isn't a good situation in any way, but I think you, we've maximized the funding that we, that we can. Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah, I think people have worked really hard and, and I appreciate that work. And hopefully we can put some things into place to make sure, whatever the model is when we reopen, kids can have an even better experience than they had in the spring. That's the, that's the goal, make it a little better every day. Some of these things will help.
Does anyone have any questions or anything? To Sheena?
I just wanted to know, would you guys lose the funding completely if you don't reopen or if you only partially reopen for the coronavirus relief fund?
So it's a great question because there's a lot of rhetoric coming out of Washington DC about Ben pulling federal funding. We, we just don't know. We don't know what
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second, Mr. Lynn, that, that I really, um, you know, any sort of, well, let's just call it blackmail or threats, you know, from governmental agencies saying they're going to pull funding for schools if schools make choices, don't make the choice they think they should make, you know, that's just it's just yeah, it's, it's something that I think there would be an enormous outcry about and I, you know, I, I, I don't anticipate it happening. I mean, they can say what they want, I don't anticipate it happening, so let's put it that way.
I just wasn't sure if there was something already in there that said that if you don't reopen exactly a certain way that you would lose the funding, so I was just curious.
Yeah, nothing that I'm aware of in those, any of those funding sort of documents. That was mostly rhetoric that I saw on the news and on social media that funding would be pulled if we don't reopen fully, but Mrs. Tucker, this might just be politicizing something that it shouldn't be political, but who knows? So.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Um, all right, moving on to a happier report there.
Yeah, I was doing the agenda and had to put something happy on here and, um, so since our last meeting, we held graduation and it was absolutely wonderful. We had a great day, got a little windy at times, which was fine, a couple of things blowing around. But the feedback I've gotten from parents, from students, from staff was that it really went wonderful. I really just can't say enough about all the work so many people did from Mr. Rigby and Mr. McNeil as the class advisors to our administrative team, to the custodians, to LPAC, to the Board of Health, everybody was just, parents were awesome in terms of being respectful of others. In terms of, you know, the vehicles they drove and how they, you know, you know, something got in someone's way, we simply asked, people moved it and so everybody could see. It was wonderful. And thank you to everyone and I'm so happy that the kids have a chance to as close to something normal as we could and had the elements that they really wanted. Sitting together as a group, crossing the stage, having their family there. It was, it was, it was awesome.
It was awesome and I will say what I said to Mr. Lynn on that day, which is I think you should do it like this again. Maybe not, no, people in cars, but it really, driving up in my car in, in the parking lot and all the cars are decorated and the parking lot was decorated and it really was a, an incredible experience. And I appreciate so much all the effort that everyone put into it, all the staff, the parents, and just really, really wonderful for that class. Just um, and I, I think honestly they'll remember it more than they would if it was a regular graduation, so.
Mrs. Tucker, I've actually heard from people in the junior class saying they're interested in the same type of thing.
Yeah.
The parents love the idea, they can beep their horns instead of flapping and it was, it was just really
I think the parade is actually going to be a tradition.
Oh, yeah. We'll bring that back. I've been told they used to have that and
Oh, okay.
We'll definitely do that again.
All right.
Thank you to the Police and Fire Department for helping us with that.
Well, you know, they do parades.
So, um, but it was just, it was fantastic. I drove home on cloud nine with the kids and their families. I have my son's graduation coming up and he has to sit with my wife and I in a 10-yard, 10-square yard block on the football field and he's like, you know, nothing against you, mom and dad, but I want to sit with my friends and he can't. So I'm like, huh, we were able to do it at school, you know, at my work, so.
Well, that's the difference between 41 graduates and how many kids, is your son graduating when?
150 or so, yeah. So, a lot. But, um, But, so moving on, unless someone else has a comment on that. The regionalization study committee is moving from data collection to analysis phase. So this is where the management. Really earns their money because they are. Looking at all the documents and information that we've collected. The last couple of months and, and really putting it together in a, in a sort of, in a way that we can, as a committee, can consume it. And make some decisions now. And the decision we make is a recommendation. Committee will make a recommendation to the school committee and to the board of selectmen and to the community in general. About the future of the North Brookfield Public Schools, whether regionalization will be right for us or not. So this is really important work. All the while, all these other things that are going on in this city has. Kept, kept it going with met pretty regularly. I appreciate the work they've done because amidst all this craziness, they, they continue to sort of keep their nose to the grindstone. And getting this stuff done.
Can I, can I just interject? So I just, I just wanna reiterate that this is the first time a formal study has actually been done. For regionalization in North Brookfield that, you know, there's been some previous conversation. And I know I actually was looking at the school committee meeting from July of twenty sixteen when a, a DESI representative. Came and spoke to the school committee. No study was done at that point. There was a committee, a town committee that was put together, I think, in twenty oh nine, but it wasn't a formal study where. You know, the data from the surrounding districts and the cohort and the demographic stuff, all that stuff was collected. And then actually just going back even farther in nineteen fifty-one, when they were looking at building a high school then to replace the. The building on Grove Street, they did a survey of the town. And then also prior to that, in, in nineteen forty, there was conversation about regionalization. So, but there's never been another study such as this one, so I just wanna make that clear.
That's an important distinction because we've collected data on facilities, on academic program, on financials, on stakeholder feedback. And all that will play into our recommendation and be sort of enclosed in a report for everybody in the community to see. All data-driven and research-based, so it's really a great process. But it has huge implications for, for everybody in the town and it's important work, so. Glad we're, we're doing it the right way.
I have a question, Mr. Lynn. This is him, sorry, is there a timeframe for their data analysis phase? I mean, just, we'll inevitably get questions and then we're not talking about it repeatedly.
Yeah, so they, they anticipate being done with the, the data analysis phase and, and providing that to us. In the late summer. You know, I, I kinda say late summer, early fall, just because. When we do wanna get back together and hear their feedback, it might be late August, but maybe we can't get everybody together, so we need to. Push it back, so I'd say they'll, you know, into late August, into early September, they'll get back to us. And then the work for our, our study committee will really start when we have to talk about. The pluses and minuses, because this consultant group isn't gonna say you should regionalize or not. They're gonna say, here's all the data, here's what we pulled out from academic program, finance, facilities. Stakeholder feedback, and it's gonna be like, I always kind of pictured in my head as pluses and minuses, like. Well, we do that better than them, but this would be good for us if we join them for that, whatever. And it's three districts that we're looking at if we decide that regionalization is right, so. There's another layer to this. If, if the first question is yes, we should regionalize, the second question is with who? And Quabin, Quabog and Spencer's Brookfield are the three districts because of their geographic connection to us, other districts where study. So there'll be probably be some period of time in the early fall where the committee continues to be, to discuss. The result of the data analysis and what it all means. And then at some point in the fall, late fall, we'll. Have a recommendation to share with, with the school and the board of selectmen. So along with a, a report, a printed sort of binded report that will go with the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions, Mrs. Tucker, move on.
Doesn't look like there's any other questions, so yeah, if you wanna.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to item D because I have a feeling item C will take a little longer and item D is a little bit quicker.
Yep.
So just in terms of hiring, really excited and happy about progress with me. We've had, we had several positions open and many of them are filled. Some aren't filled because there's some things that we need to do first, so for example, all of the open positions that we have at the end of school. Are filled, that includes halftime music at North Brookfield Elementary School, Mr. Zach Fisher. Our band chorus teacher at the junior senior high, Mike Weber. Our adjustment counselor at the elementary school, Tiffany Klein, and then we have a one point oh, full-time speech and language pathology assistant. And a halftime speech and language pathology assistant, Miss Pinto and Miss Bryn. And as you remember, Ms. Irwin retired, Jacqueline Fernandez will be taking over for her. We also need a special education teacher for one of our classrooms for maternity leave, so that's August through October. The teacher returning in early November. And we just had a retirement of Mrs. Doros from the junior senior high school, he's a little school history teacher. So that position has been posted and we do have some internal, an internal candidate who's interested, so. That posting has reached its days. We will be, most likely be making an internal switch and hiring an English language arts teacher. The junior senior high. We also need a point three, which comes out to about a day and a half a week, of an ELL teacher, that's an English language learner teacher. For students whose first language is not English. And tonight on the school committee agenda later, I'll be asking to approve. A computer technician position, a part-time one, fifteen hours a week. So that's kind of in italics right now, because it's not, we're not actively seeking anyone yet until you. Approve it, so that's, that's the hiring stance. We are way ahead where we have been in the previous years. Just decided to beat the candidates that we've hired. I think they're all excellent and gonna do a great job for us. Our principals of hiring committees have done a really nice job.
And I'm, I'm looking forward, and Mrs. Priestley mentioned that she's gonna do a little intro on the, I think, on the Facebook page.
Yeah, we'll be doing that at the junior senior high as well.
Awesome. I think that's great. Get to know the staff, new staff a little bit.
Okay, so the last piece of my report is related to the reentry task force, which obviously relates specifically. To reopening school after being all remote. It's kind of like a. You know, one question leads to a thousand more right now, so. You know, unfortunately, I don't have a ton of answers for people, but we are slowly getting answers and. We're doing it with a, in a task force approach. We have a representative group of people and across all different sort of. Job categories and parents to, to be in. Mr. Canada is the school committee rep. And, you know, we do have. Sort of a membership here and it's, it's extensive. It's about twenty-two or twenty-three people and. As I've said before and I'll say again, having this group is fantastic because. I don't have all the answers and frankly, I don't even have all the questions, so having twenty-two and twenty-three people. Who are not only helping provide the answers, but also asking the questions that I haven't thought of or, you know, administrators haven't thought of. So we've been meeting, we've met several times. Making some progress. Progress is slow right now because a lot of the state guidance hasn't come back yet. Only keep going here, so. So as I mentioned, the state guidance has been slow. I have shared, I believe, all of these documents to the school committee. And parents and guardians over the course of the last couple of months and staff as well. Most recently, there's been three documents that have come out pretty quickly. One is plan development. That's the document that describes the plans that we need to stick to the state to see how we're gonna reopen. The state also released a fall opening FAQ for any asked questions. I would encourage everybody to read that. Because it has some of those questions we all have it on mind with the answers in most cases. And then I, I call it the, you know, the playbook, so, because everybody is asking. What happens if someone is sick? What happens if someone's exposed? Whether it's a staff person? What happens if it happens out of school, in school? This, this document. Covers all of those scenarios. What we don't have yet is guidance for transportation. We have no guidance from the state on how many kids can fit in a regular school bus. What is the physical distancing requirement? What about masks? Is it gonna be required for everybody? What about the K to two kids and pre-K to two kids? We also have no guidance on extracurricular activities and athletics, so are those things allowed, not allowed? So we do have a lot of information. We're certainly working with that information. But it's hard to do this in isolation, because these things are in vac, in a vacuum. You can't open school without knowing what transportation is. You know, that's just, they go together. So we, we're doing the best we can as a task force and just know that we're not alone. Every district, every superintendent that I talked to is having the same challenges and questions. Every parent, every teacher, staff member. Have the same questions across the state. We're just gonna have to ask you to be patient and as that guidance comes up. We'll, we'll do our work and we'll put together the plan that one puts the most kids in school. The safest possible way. I've sent a couple of surveys on and. People have been wonderful responding to those.
When are those, when are those surveys? Do you have a deadline on them?
I don't. I'm just going week to week. When we open up a meeting for the task force, I try to share the data out today. So.
The other, just the other thing, there seemed to be a little bit of confusion. Just there was that there's two surveys, so you probably maybe wanna share that again, maybe an email with both of them, explain the difference. And then the, the slide you're gonna share with us next, are you, are you gonna post those on the website and share a link? So people can, who may not have been to the, come to the meeting tonight can.
Sure. Yeah, so as most people know, the state has, has issued guidance for districts to develop a plan. With three possible scenarios, bottles, an in-person model where all the students return to school. A remote model where all the students remain at home. Where some portion of the kids come to school while the others work at home and then they switch. On some regular schedule, so we are in the process of doing that work and that's. What a lot of the, the second survey was about was. All-in-person or hybrid models for parents. And I know I'm asking you questions from those surveys that you don't necessarily know. That's why I start almost every single one with knowing what you do know right now. What would you do if? No one's gonna hold you to it, but it does help our group plan. So the state guidance does not change no matter what model we're in, obviously for a remote, you don't have to worry about physical distance. But masks are gonna be required for all adults and all kids, grades two to twelve. Pre-K to one, they're strongly encouraged but not required. Minimal physical distancing of three feet during the day. The hope that we can get it to be more if there's space. But six feet when kids don't have their mask on during mass breaks or lunch. Protocols for anyone that's sick or becomes sick, they've released those today. Ensuring that we have a regular cleaning and most importantly disinfecting schedule both during the school day and outside of the school day, so. You know, there needs to be regular cleaning during the day when someone's class goes to lunch or leaves the room for a special or something like that. We need to get the room clean, disinfected. And then protocols and procedures for operational activities, house transportation. Transitions of building, what about visitors, etc., etc. So our plan needs to touch on. So many different aspects of our, of all, every aspect of our day. But no matter which model we're in, either hybrid or all-in-person, these are consistent. They don't change because we have more kids or less kids. Those, these are the standards. So after really looking at all these. Models and talking to colleagues and talking to the. Task force, talking to administrators. My recommendation is ultimately gonna be to the school committee, does need to approve this, that we pursue a hybrid learning model. That's the one where a percentage of kids will come for some part of the day and the other kids will work at home for the week. Still working on the models and I'll share that. Models that we're looking at. Because of a number of factors, including safety, meaningful academic program and, and financial concerns. I'm gonna quickly share the two models that the task force has looked at. The school committee so that they can get a sense of where we're going. So model one would set up the week in. It's a, it's a one-week rotation, so it'd be two groups of kids, group A and group B. Picture in half the kids in grade seven, half, the other half are in, half the kids in grades, in each grade level are in group A. And the other half of the kids at that grade level are in group B. So we would have grades pre-K to twelve in the building, but only half of them. If your kid is in group A on Monday and Tuesday, they would come to school. Live in-person instruction. Wednesdays, no one would come to school. In the mornings, students would work remotely. Teachers would set, set up virtuals, check-ins either with individuals or small groups, video conferencing. Make sure kids are moving forward, do an extra help, whatever. In the afternoon, we'd have time for our staff to do additional training and professional development if necessary. Planning and collaboration times, staff meetings, that would give our custodians time midweek to do a deep cleaning. Because then Thursday and Friday, group B would come. Just so you know, on Friday after the group B leaves, the custodians would do another deep cleaning. So every time the group changes, two buildings would experience a, a deep cleaning. The second model we're looking at is actually kind of the week on, week off model. If your child is in group A, they would come to school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And group B would be remote. Again, Wednesdays would remain sort of students working remotely with. The check-ins and the, and the extra help in the morning and then the afternoon, the training and collaboration and cleaning time in the afternoon. And then in week two, the two groups reverse. There are positives and negatives to both. We've debated them. We continue to talk about it in the task force. And Thursday night, we have a meeting of the task force. We have these two models that we have debated and talked about, sort of explored. My preference is model one because for a couple of reasons. One is. One is kids do not go an extended period of time without seeing their teachers live. It may only be for two days, but see them regularly, I think. So over the spring, the longer kids go without seeing their teachers, the less likely they are to stay engaged. That's just the way it is. Second. It also provides something for working parents. We know kids are going to be home at some period of time. And I think if parents know my child is going to be home Wednesday and Thursday, Friday, every week, they can plan for that. As opposed to the week on, week off model, the week on, week off model means five days, you have to plan for something one week. And the next week it's only one day. There's no consistency in that. And I think the people I've spoken to, they say, yeah, I could work from home. I can talk to my boss, but I need something more consistent. Or people who are searching for daycare are looking for something consistent. So those are the two models. We haven't made a decision, but my recommendation right now would be that we. That we look at model one as the sort of leader in the clubhouse. So, so why? One is, is safety. Physical distancing requirement of three feet is sort of antithetical to what we've heard for the past four or five months. Six feet is sort of the standard. I think a lot of people have concerns about the three feet and our ability within the classrooms to have every student in class at six feet. Is severely, we can't, we can fit about 12 or 13 kids at, at six feet. That means classrooms have to be split in half and who's going to be with those kids? If their teacher's with one group, someone who's not their teacher is with the other group. What are they really getting out of that time? Mask and mask breaks. As I said earlier, when kids take a mask break or go to lunch to eat, they have to have their mask off, which requires six feet. I don't know where we're going to put all these kids to eat lunch or to take a quick break. I just don't think that we can. And then managing and supervising all those students for teachers. I think that I'm worried that they become the mask police, like put it on, put it on, put it on. Like, I don't know about you, but I go to a store and I'm in the store for a little while and I can't wait to get out and pull it off. Imagine six and a half, seven hours of that as an adult. Now put yourself in a six-year-old body, a 12-year-old body and mind or a, or an 18-year-old body at mind. I mean, it's just going to be really difficult. One of the other things we talked about was hygiene, the ability to access sinks and, and hand sanitizer. What a sink isn't available if you have a classroom of 24, 24 kids washing their hands every time they walk in and out. It's going to take a half an hour every time. Having smaller numbers allows kids to access it. Then if there is a problem, contact tracing, smaller group, half the kids will react a lot easier. There is a problem isolating that group will be easier. And then in the end, I think just confidence of the adults and probably the kids too. For our staff and our parents and guardians that I've talked to and have looked at the survey, there's a lot of doubt about whether this, having every kid in school can be done safely. We can take every precaution, but if people truly aren't convinced, no matter what we do, we can do everything right. And then they might not be convinced. If we don't have the confidence of the adults in the community, staff and parents, it's just not going to work. So that's one piece. The second is the meaningful academic program. I mentioned all students have a regular access. I mentioned the space. If we go to six feet of space, even three feet of space, we are removing an awful lot of stuff out of classrooms. And I'm not talking about, you know, just bookshelves. I'm talking about the stuff on the bookshelves, books, manipulatives, things that kids use to enhance and teachers use to enhance the educational environment. If everything has to be removed just to fit kids, well, what are we really doing? You know, we're getting all the kids in school, but we're not really having a meaningful program that allows them to interact with each other and materials effectively. I see Mrs. Pratt's in that meeting. I'm managing a classroom with no books, like, and I'm going to mute her because she might use bad words. Because she, she's the book lady and she should use bad words if we don't have books in class. But we, Mr. Sharr and I measured classrooms and we're talking about removing an awful lot of stuff just to fit every kid in. And that's important, but to me, this becomes about quality versus quantity. I don't want all the kids, if it's not going to be the program that we need it to be, I'd rather do half the time and have a really strong program. The kids can interact with each other and materials.
Go ahead. I'm, I'm. I'm sorry, I'll ask my question later.
I go back to the confidence of the staff and parents and guardians, I think, having half the kids from the, from the perspective of the surveys is just higher. Higher confidence that that can be pulled off. And lastly, flexibility. I don't think any of us think this has gone away anytime soon. And there's a strong chance that it could be exposure at our schools or the state has a second wave surge and we need to close down. Hybrid gives, has a toe in the water, so to speak, in both moving to all in person, moving towards that. And or moving the other direction to all remote if we need to. As staff will be doing both, kids will be doing both. So if we do have to move, it's not a big. Sort of jump. And then lastly, it's just the monetary concerns that come with. The kind of in-person model we're talking about. I wish Riley put in the guidance, a level service plus budget. Level services, we get the money that at least that we had to have all the programs we had last year. And then add in all the money to do what we need to do to physical distance and safety. I don't think any of us think the budget is going to be that good. Given the economic downturn that we've had. And then. The operations nightmare for all of these things, how much extra is transportation going to cost? How much, if we're half the kids, I don't think we have any additional costs. We are all in. This limited dollars, if we spend it on transportation, we can't spend it on staff or supplies or something else. So cleaning and disinfecting, what are going to be the requirements if, if, if there is? What about food services and lunch, room capacity and staffing? You know, making use of every space I'm fine with, but who's going to be there? So those all cost money. And so that's where I'm at in terms of right now, as of today, my recommendation would be for hybrid model. Model one where we kind of do it on the half of a week basis, kind of a group A on Monday and Tuesday, group B on Thursday and Friday. Mrs. Pepper asked earlier about the timeline. Our preliminary plan is due to the state on July 31st. And a comprehensive plan is due on August 10th. School committee must approve our plan, so we will need to schedule another school committee meeting, take action on our plan. And I'm recommending the 27th, but it can be another day, Monday. And there are other considerations. The state's position of the district doesn't, district does not come back to all in-person learning. I don't know that. I don't know what the state is going to say about that. And we still need to work with our, our teachers union, our ESP group and our custodians. Because all of this is subject to bargaining, so. We do need to meet with those folks and talk about what it will look like and come to agreement.
Mr. Lind, this is Angela Jermaine. I'm just wondering if we go with that hybrid model, what the days that the children are not in the building look like for them? Is it self-directed learning or are they going to be logging in via Google meets and learning?
Yeah, it's going to be remote learning and self-directed. Teachers will be giving them assignments and things to do because the teacher, we teach it. When they are remote, other than those Wednesday mornings when teachers will schedule times with, with students, whether, you know, no matter what group they're in AOB. It will be based on student need. But when, you know, if a student in group A is home on Thursday and Friday, they would not be, have access necessarily to their teacher during the day. Because the teacher is teaching all day.
Okay, thank you.
So, good question.
I have a few questions. What about, will kids have a, will all kids from the same family be on the same, in the same group?
Yet to be worked out.
Because.
Very beginning.
Yeah, but just saying like, is that something you guys have thought about? Because that could become a huge problem.
It certainly is, but we just haven't gotten there yet.
That's fine. Just a question. What about kids with sensory issues who are going to have trouble wearing masks? Or kids who are autoimmune compromised, who maybe can't be around other kids and have to do remote learning completely? I know that I am personally having a lot of concerns about even a hybrid model for my kids, but I can totally see why district would. I think that is a great idea for the district in general. I'm just not sure if it's good for my kids. Are they going to have to do remote learning all on their own completely with no teacher instruction?
So. I can answer that question because we're still waiting for guidance from the state on the remote only question for like immunocompromised kids. I can't, I can't tell you that yes, that's how it's going to work right now. So when that guidance comes, we'll have more information about the remote only if that's, you know, there's a medical reason for a child not to be in school. In terms of masks, just to answer your other question, masks are for kids that cannot wear a mask due to some medical condition or other challenge that they might have. They can be waived. But it just, it creates a real challenge in terms of teaching and learning because now we have six feet of space.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, it's really difficult, but you know, we'll provide the appropriate PPE for our staff. If there are kids who are not able to wear masks, things like shields and other protective equipment. Again, not, not that teachers want to be wearing to be able to teach kids. But unfortunately, that's, that's the, you know, I guess as our governor would say, the new normal that we're going to be working with.
You're waiting for guidance for the remote learning piece for kids who choose not, can't for medical reasons. But why are you waiting for a state guidance? Like if the state says that you don't have to provide anything, is the district going to decide not to provide anything?
Well, because this, I mean, the commissioner of education, the department of elementary and secondary education are our sort of. Guiding light, educationally speaking. So they've provided all the guidance on all of this. It's the same reason why we're not producing transportation, because they're going to issue guidance on how to do this. So, yeah, I mean, there's more to come. There's so many unanswered questions. I wish I had better answers.
I had something to jump in here. One of the things, Tashina, on the committee that, that we've run into is there are so many scenarios. We are, we've tossed out, we've, we've discussed sensory issues. We have discussed some of the IEP and special education considerations. Right now, we're looking at, in the, in the broad spectrum of things, we're looking at what the kids are going to be doing while they're in school. What the kids will be doing if they're at home, how they're going to get from home to school. And then, and then in the midst of all that, there's the individual students. So we're trying to, we have to look at the state as far as what they need so that when we submit our plan to them, it'll be approved and come back to us. And then in addition to what the state requires for language, we're obviously going to have to custom tailor things to the individual needs of the students at the school. It's, it's, it's been a big task for the committee and we've, you know, I wrote these things down and Thursday is kind of a similar to what you're, you're doing here is. We're all going to, there's 23 of us on the committee and we're going to be kind of coming up with our own ideas and each throwing out the things that we're thinking of. So we could have a list of these considerations because at this point, we've been so worried about just the broader logistics of it. That now we need to get into the more specific needs of the individual student population. And that's, that's the next step as we put together our plan.
So the last piece of this is, hold on, the last piece of this is that. The question comes up, what about kids who have significant special needs or, and I've said before, or I'll say again. Students with significant special education needs who are in our connect and rise programs and our preschool programs and our ELL students. The plan is for them to attend every day. There will be no group A or group B. However, I think we are going to have them, my recommendation would be have those students work remotely. Potentially on Wednesdays or maybe access some of their related services on Wednesday morning. So again, those are details that we haven't got yet, but I've said a number of times over this period that. Our students in our substantially separate programs, preschool and. ELL students would not be part of a group A and group B. They would come every day. Ellen, was that your question? That's why I cut you off, sorry.
No, thank you.
I think others had it.
I know there's only four of us, but they're small enough that they could come every day and that's what I was hoping your answer was going to be.
Yeah, that's really good guidance from the state to ensure, because although every student has been impacted over the course of the spring. Is probably that group of students has been the most impacted in terms of sort of progress. So, and so our hope is by providing that programming, they're able to regain maybe some of the losses that they might have had or. You know, maintain and continue to improve over the course of the year.
They're doing well in summer school, so we've got.
Good to hear, yeah. I got, they, they did some cooking today and it was delicious. So, so, yeah.
I just, I just got to play devil's advocate a little bit here, not understanding that there is no good scenario here, unfortunately. From the perspective of parents who may both work outside the house. You know, I, I just. What do you, I mean, I guess what, what do we think people will do? I mean, I know my husband and I have already started talking about what we're going to do. So I just, is there conversations about that in the, in the reentry committee? You guys, I mean, I know some of you must have that situation as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the big reasons why I'm recommending the, the, the one week sort of on off again, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday group. Is, is some consistency to that for parents who one, might be able to work remotely, work remotely on a couple of days. So three days a week, if you know your child's going to be remote and you're in group A, your child has a group A. That means Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they're remote and that's consistently every week. Second, if you need to find childcare, you know it's consistent. The other way it's. Remote for a week and then the next week they're in person for a week. Some of the parents on the committee said finding coverage of working home a couple of days a week is easier for three days a week than it is on and off. Which was sort of one of the things that led me to feel like that's the better model. Because, you know, someone can work home through a three days a week and find coverage, you know, one day a week if they can only do two days. A week at home. It's easier for parents to do that and go into the office a couple of days. So that's kind of where we're at. I mean, there are other positives that I mentioned, like the cleaning, the fact that kids do not go more than a couple of days without seeing their teachers. So they're seeing them more regularly. Go more than a couple of days without seeing their teachers, so they're seeing them more regularly. So there are some, um, you know, obviously other things other than just sort of our. Parents, but parents have definitely clouded that.
So, uh, there was a question from one of the participants, Mark, did you wanna? Where are you, Mark? You were gonna answer it for her, or you, or ask it for her?
Well, I think that Ton, Ton, I was asking, I think Tanya's question got answered, so.
Okay, so the other one was from Jillian and she said, um, I think it's important for the school to make consideration for families. That do not feel safe sending their children to school at all. Many districts are still finding remote learning that includes direct instruction versus self-directed learning. Self-directed learning does not work for elementary age students when parents are trying to work from home too. Especially in consideration of a hybrid model, there's no safe way to ensure where children are going the three days that aren't in school, increasing transition risk for students and staff. So I think there's kind of two questions in there, which is, A, um. Thinking about the, you know, remote learning, a hundred percent remote learning for families that may. Feel, uh, either have medical issues or. Not want to send their kids to school at all. And then the second one was the, the question of self-directed learning for. Some, I think the younger elementary school kids, that it doesn't work if you're, if. With parents that are almost at work. Does that answer you? Jillian, are you on? Is that, did I phrase that right?
Yeah, I just, I know that I'm not, I mean, I'm a single parent. I have, um, my daughter who's in, going in third grade. And then I have twins that are, uh, eighteen months and all of my children are premature. They all have lung issues. Um, and I'm a single parent with zero other supports now, so should Macy get sick, should one of the twins get sick? I'm at a severe disadvantage for being able to manage that situation and I don't have anyone else to watch my kids during the week. You know, there aren't a lot, like, they're not moving through vouchers right now for families. So if there are families who are economically disadvantaged, they may be applying for daycare vouchers for their school age kids. Knowing now that they need them and they're not moving those through, they're not approving new daycare centers for, um, children, many are closing. So my fear is what's going to happen to these kids three days a week when there isn't anywhere to send them? You know, we're already concerned about how are these kids getting their meals every day? How are they getting, you know, a, a safe home environment? And we're now talking about three days a week where strapped parents are gonna be. Potentially put in situations where they're leaving these kids home or putting them in unsafe situations because they don't have another choice, so. I'm just hoping, it's not even so much a question, I'm just hoping that as you guys are having these conversations, as you're doing your planning, that you're kind of. Keeping these families in mind, you know, we, we know that. The population of our town is primarily white, um, is primarily lower class, um, and so I just hope that we're keeping. Those things in our minds as we're making these plans, that we're also thinking about those that are disadvantaged and planning appropriately. You know, I'm trying to be the voice for the other people in this town that have already expressed their concerns about. How this is gonna work, you know, it works one way if you're a two-parent family and so one parent goes the beginning of the week and one parent goes the end of the week. But when you don't have that as an option, where does that leave our kids? And I know my daughter is severely behind from having self-directed learning, because there was no way for me to work from home. Parent my twins, who are wild, and also educate my daughter. So she missed out on all of that remote learning because she simply couldn't access it. So, you know, what are we gonna do to make sure that our new kindergartners that are coming in, our first graders whose kindergarten experience wasn't great? Are able to access the appropriate education and are staying safe while they're doing it. That's really. It's more just a comment. It's not really a question. I, I know we don't have answers to these things. I just hope that we're keeping those in mind as we're planning.
We are, we certainly are, and I think, um, you sort of very well expressed in a very great way, you expressed. Sort of the, the challenge that we face, that, you know, um, balance of safety with academic program. You, you did a fantastic job of, of sort of outlining our challenge and, and. You know, how do we get there from here? And there are no good answers. You know, we'll certainly kind of group think and come up with the best solution to ensure that. We get the most number of kids in school regularly in the safest possible way. You know, I don't think anybody joined that commit, that task force. Is unaware that whatever decision is made, is be someone who looks at it and says, that's not good, that doesn't work for me. I think we all know that, that there's no perfect solutions. But we're gonna do the best we can and these types of conversations where we gather information, either directly from people or through surveys. Allows us to, to think about the things that. You know, either we thought of and forgot about, or it got put on a back burner somewhere, because there's ten million topics or. Or, or, um, you know, that just sort of gets lost with, uh, uh. What we didn't think of yet, I guess, is the, the other way, so.
I have a question, sorry to interrupt, um, is it possible to do a hybrid model where parents who are able to stay home? Their kids could be remote and zoom in or Google chat all day and then we give our space to the kids. Whose parents have to work. I mean, I'm happy to have my kid zoom in all day. I'm not happy to have him self-direct. We literally did a semester and a weekend here, did not work out very well. Um, but if he is on a structure and zooms in and is part of the classroom remotely, I would. He can stay here, he and a buddy can stay here six feet apart, so two kids can go to class, so their parents can pay their bills. Is that a hybrid option?
Um, I'm not sure it is, because the idea of some kids learning in school and some kids do a remote. Our teachers can't do both, because there's, there's no way for them to manage both. In my opinion, certainly throw it out to the task force when we get in there, I think that's a huge leap.
I have a question too, if I can interrupt, um. Is there a way to give this teachers like time during the day where they can check in with the kids that are remote? Like maybe when their students are at a special or something like that, they can check in with the kids that are at home and make sure they're. On task or if they have any questions or.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, but you're talking about, say at the junior senior high, like five classes. So in that forty-five minutes, they, they have to check in with five classes worth of kids, I'm not sure.
Well, I think the junior senior high is kind of different there. I think they can do more self-directed. If the teachers just have like hours like they did last year, or like on Wednesdays, they'd have time where the kids could talk to them or whatever, but. Of what, but the elementary school is more what I'm worried about.
Well, I, I think what the, you know, the, the question of having, and I'm gonna defer to the teachers that are out there in the science is that. Teaching distance learning and teaching in a classroom is, um, from my understanding, two very different things. So if a teacher is in the classroom with, let's say, Group A, but there are kids at home and they're also. Attempting to do distance learning with the kids at home, my understanding is that's not going to work out well. Um, am I, am I right, Mrs. Priestley or anyone, any teacher?
I'll, I'll jump in, um, just because I've had conversations with the staff at the elementary school about this very topic and. They're thinking about that. They are absolutely churning over in their minds all of these things and thinking about. Planning and instructional planning and, you know. Setting up students with a set of skills, it, when they're in front of them and then saying, okay, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna see you for the next. X amount of days, so this is what I want you to work on and, and putting digital resources for them and giving them those. Structures and saying, okay, when we meet again, this is what I want you to work on and we're gonna touch base when you come back, so. They're being very thoughtful about what that will look like if that's the route we end up taking. So I, I do want the parents, um, to understand that the teachers are very seriously considering what that will look like. If we do have to go, you know, in a, in a hybrid model where students have to do some self-directed work. In the interim when they're not in front of their teachers, that it won't just be what it was in March, April, May, June. Um, but that, that, that they're really deliberately planning for that and. And expect it to be successful, you know, they, they really are being thoughtful about that.
Well, I think the, the question coming up that having some kids who are, you know, medically, more medically fragile or, or for whatever reason. At home a hundred percent and not being in the class, you know, two days a week or whatever, is it, is that? Is that a model that's feasible that you can see that a, a teacher would be able to? You know, teach the classroom of, the small classroom of half the kids and then, but also the kids that are at home a hundred percent. Is that, is that a feasible model?
Yeah, I, I would say that. If a student had to be a hundred percent remote, that we would accommodate that. That's our obligation. We need to meet those students where they are. And, and whether they need to be a hundred percent in person or a hundred percent remote, that it's up to us to put the structures in for them to be successful.
Right, I think the, the question is, is self-directed versus, you know, um, directed.
Right.
Is that, is that, is that feasible where you can have kids at home and, and they're not being asked to be self-directed? Is that a possibility?
I believe that we have enough staff to meet those students, whether it's zooming with them throughout the day. Making sure that we're meeting them in, in synchronous learning activities. Yes, I think we can do it. Yes.
So you, you think that that is a serious, so what Jillian and has brought up is, it is a possibility?
Oh, absolutely, yes. I, I believe that we will, we will meet our students' needs. Whether they're in front of us or whether they are at home. If we need to meet with them, we'll find a way. We have to. Okay.
Maria, um, I, I have a wife who is m- more than. Leaning towards keeping our daughter out of school if, if we don't have a good enough plan. I think our goal is really to try to make sure that people can feel comfortable sending their child to school. And that's really been our focus is just what precautions and things we can do to make that work.
Yeah, no, I, I.
There's a lot more to come, it's just, it's, we're, we're, I'm afraid we're going to fall into a similar rabbit hole that we do at the. Some of these other meetings where there's, there's a lot of different directions we could go, we could, all of us could sit here till midnight and go through every possibility.
Sure, yeah, no, I mean, I, I think obviously the goal is to have, um, as many kids as possible returned to school in this model. And, and hopefully, you know, maybe in, hey, maybe by March next year, woo-hoo, um, um. Yeah, no, I just, just, it is a serious question that, uh, Jillian asked.
Well, and I think, you know.
And I just wanna make sure.
Mr. Minucci and I are all, you know, and Mrs. Powers are all working very hard to put plans in place and, and. Every situation's gonna be different, every student situation, you know, is individualized and we have to meet students where they are. And we won't know that until we're in it, so, but we have to keep the plan open to, to meet those needs.
If, I like the idea, there's that are coming up from the parents and I wanna compliment you for speaking up and, and asking these questions. I think that maybe we could set up a forum where, where parents could ask these questions, you know, we could. We could bring them to the committee and give the committee, uh, an opportunity to, to kind of digest that information. Cause I agree with Tim and I thank you, Tim, for speaking up. You can't get, we can't get into a morass if we just. Keep going on what-if scenarios right now, but, but, but I'm sincere in saying, I really appreciate. The questions that parents are asking and I think they're really good ones.
I do too, and, uh, Mr. Lynn and I had spoken earlier, because we had, we were trying to narrow down some of the focus things and we talked about. Working with the committee to set up forums for the parents to voice their individual things. We just wanted more of a solid plan to present, so that we could then discuss the nuances of that plan instead of. Branching off before we get a little bit more focused.
So, in terms of timing, um, so preliminary plan has to be set by July thirty-first. And, uh, Mr. Lynn wants the school committee to vote on something by, um, next week.
Any day next week.
So a preliminary plan does not necessarily mean that it's set in stone. It's like, this is what we think our best option is, correct?
Yeah, the, the plan document that the state sent out actually talks about what you're, how are you leaning right now?
Okay.
So, you know, if you have to choose. But you're not tied to it.
Right, so next week, you know, we could, we could vote on a plan that, that may not have all these other nuances in it. And we could say, okay, we're, we're comfortable voting on this preliminary plan, but then is August tenth, is that the drop?
Yep.
Okay, so if you're gonna do forums. Let's do them.
Okie doke. I mean, I think like, like Tim said, I think part of it is.
Yeah.
Having a forum with no sort of base means it's just, it's just a lot of questions without any real.
Yeah.
Focus.
So what are, so if, if we vote on this hybrid plan and we say, all right, this is the one that we're gonna send to the state. And then are there, you know, there are a couple of questions have come up. You know, specifically around, you know, uh, childcare for kids and, and it seems like childcare. And also, um, the whole, the whole self-directed learning, those both seem to be the big questions. Any, am I right? Any other?
I, I think, I think you're right. I'm sure there's a ten thousand other questions like there usually is. I think one of the things folks have to remember is. There are other factors that play in, for example, we do have to bargain with our, our teachers and our staffing. I can't just change conditions of work, um, by saying you've gotta do remote and, uh, live. Without an agreement with the, with the union. So people can say this is a great idea, but there are a lot of steps to make things like that happen.
Right.
It's not just as easy as saying, let's do it. Um, there are a lot of steps involved, so I appreciate the input. And, uh, and the feedback, because that's really valuable and helps us plan, but there are a lot of sort of. Hidden steps that, that most people don't know exist and they just look and say, well, why don't we just do that? If life was that easy, we would, it's just not, I mean, I wanna just make sure people understand that. Not doing something doesn't mean that, um, you know, we ignored whatever suggestion was made. But we do have, you know, a lot of processes and procedures and, and. Other things to address, legal implications, to ensure that we're doing, um, that we can do everything that, uh, we put into. So, there are, you know, this has to be shared with the state. I have no idea how the state is going to react. Just to a hybrid model, but they have been clear, they would like us to focus on an in-person. Both in written word and, um, from the commissioner himself. But I don't believe that's the best way to go for our community right now.
I, I think it's likely, I think it's likely the state is using this in the same way we've sent the surveys out to the parents in the town here. The state wants all of the districts in, in the state to give them the feedback before they finalize their own policies. We're, we're writing some of their policy for them and giving them some ideas as to which way the wind is blowing.
You're probably right, but I just want people to be aware, um, you know, that the people who work really are, put together the best plan. But there are some other factors that play into sort of where we land.
Right.
It just can't be, if this is what we want, then why don't we just do it?
Right. I think that, I think, you know, very good, very good to remind us that, you know, there's a lot of, um, parts to this. Um, I, I do think, you know, those are some legitimate concerns that it, it is worth. I mean, I know that you probably already thought about these at the, the task force, but, or the, the committee, whatever, reopening committee. Um, just, you know, worth, uh. Worth hearing what people are saying in terms of.
Absolutely, everybody's concerns were absolutely legitimate and, and well-stated, so, yeah, I just, you know. I, I hate to play that sort of role, but in my role as a superintendent, I sometimes have to, so. There's a lot of sort of I's to do and T's to draw across to make anything happen. This is a huge thing. This is sort of reshaping what's, what looks like for a good portion. Well, for everybody in our community, not a good portion for everybody. So there's a lot of work to do and, and approvals to get, so.
So in terms of in terms of us sending, you know, I mean, we can vote on a preliminary plan next week. But in my in my understanding, you you want to then you you would be willing to do the forums if we could sort of focus the particular concerns.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we're gonna definitely do forums. We'd already decided.
But we want to but we want to focus because we don't want have, you know, everybody to say, you know. I want my kid to have ice cream every day at lunch or something, whatever, you know. Getting.
Sort of. Narrow down into what.
And and obviously.
I was actually looking at different levels like, you know.
Right.
Two or three and.
Right.
The six, seven and eight and the nine to twelve, because I think.
Obviously, the concerns are dependent on the age of the kid. Yeah.
Yeah. So. That's it for for that. Well, that's not it. That's it right now. There's so much more to do.
Uh, yeah, I mean, thank you. I mean, to the the people who are taking the time to be on the committee. And thanks, Tim, because he's brand new and he volunteered. So thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of great.
Administ- I was getting myself into, but.
No, I appreciate your voice, Tim, very rational and practical.
So we have our administrative reports. This is the first report for. Flowers and I for the Junior Senior High School. I mentioned earlier that. Hiring. We. Have our band teacher. We did just get a resignation, a retirement, so we'll be filling a position there. But things are coming together nicely. We have a seventh grade orientation scheduled Friday, October fourteenth. We will be. Putting together. We also looking at October seventh for parent-teacher conferences and. A whole bunch of other scheduling thing I mentioned earlier, the one-to-one initiative that's coming. So there's a lot going on and. And happening. And I'm gonna try to open Mrs. Flowers on scheduling. People need to know, obviously, this is all dependent on reopening, but scheduling is probably the biggest question. That parents and kids have right now. So Jean, take it away.
All right, thank you. So Ms. Sears and Ms. O'Hara and I have been working on finalizing schedules and getting them into our School Brains portal. So our goal. Is to open up the School Brains portal for our seventh through twelfth graders on Monday, August third. To take a look at their schedules. So we'll be setting up two meeting times for any seniors and juniors and then sophomores and freshmen who. Might need to tweak something in their schedule to meet with Mrs. Sears over the summer. So the junior, senior high families will receive an email from Mr. Lynn and I about. How to sign up and to remind them that August third is when the School Brains portal will open and everyone can see their schedules. And then the last little bit from Mr. Lynn and I is tomorrow night at six thirty, we are hosting our first co-principals chat. So this is a chance for our parents and guardians to. Hear a little bit from us about some of our visioning for the Junior Senior High School for this coming year as well as a chance to ask questions. And we will do our best to answer them with whatever we have ready to go. So but we will be hosting a number of chats throughout the year to ensure that parents and guardians can, you know, connect with us and ask questions. So that's tomorrow night. At six thirty PM and families of the Junior Senior High School will get an email from us that will have the specific Zoom link in it. So there is a virtual meeting. So hopefully people can join us tomorrow night. And that's our report.
Did we ever get any? First of all, I love your haircut. It's so cute.
Thank you.
We're not gonna change, sorry.
And then also, did we ever decide to do anything for eighth grade kind of graduation step up? Was is that still?
We're we're talking about kind of a like a welcome back kind of step up eighth grade into ninth grade. So that's still in the conversations. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Priestley?
Hi, everyone. So. Can everyone hear me? My internet's been spotty.
We got you.
Okay, thank you. As you may have read in the report, we have some new staff joining us. Mrs. Tiffany Klein is our adjustment counselor. Mr. Zach Fisher is our point five music teacher and Ms. Jackie Fernandez as our preschool teacher for the half-day program. And we'll be featuring their spotlights in the Facebook pages next month. One of the things I did not include in my report was that I've been hosting some discussions with staff about what reopening will look like and what some of the things that they've been thinking about. One of the one of the best qualities of our staff is that they don't stop working over the summer. They think about. Their students and what next year will look like. You know, they're off for the summer, but they're thinking about it and they're working and they're doing their research and they're listening. You know, to all of the the latest. And so bringing them into the conversations has been. So invaluable. They have been proposing different resources and ideas and. Our new staff has joined us in this last most latest discussion and just bringing that expertise to our to our building and. We've been having a lot of conversations about, you know, what we can do for social emotional health and. Best instructional practices with the social distancing and family engagement. So we're really working on that. We have not put into place any. Community or family outreach conversations. I'm interested to see how the high school. Outreach tomorrow night goes and I would love to host some at at our level as well. And I anticipate that we'll be holding some of those in August. As far as scheduling goes, as I included in my report, our social emotional curriculum, second step, it has traditionally been a pull-out special. We are bringing it back into the classrooms and empowering the teachers to. Kind of. Integrate that into their everyday curriculums as it was intended to do. So that's very exciting. Having art be in the program every week for the students, which has not been the case in the past. So we're really looking forward to those. Improved changes and of course, as I mentioned in my report, huge thank you to Mr. Shaw and the Facilities Department. They have painted so many hallways. It looks amazing. If you haven't been to the building. Come on by. We are open eight to two every day. I'm there. Bring your mask and I will take you on a tour of the building. It looks amazing. So thank you to them.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Priestley. And I just want to encourage any of the parents or other people that are there. You know, feel free to interrupt me if you had more questions. I'm a chronic interrupter myself, so don't be afraid or send a chat message. We had another. Question about what the what will happen if there is a positive test. And Tim answered it saying that there's going to be protocols and these are all things that are. Being worked on. It's all very much unfortunately a huge unknown for us all, though, but. Uh, we're we're working on it, right? So. Mr. Minucci?
Thank you. Well, I want to start off, first of all, by saying it's so good to see such a wide range of people on school committee tonight. This makes.
Awesome.
It's unbelievable. So so I'm gonna put a shameless plug in. It is. It is on in my report, but. One of the things we we do need people to step up and work on sped pack with me, Special Education Parent Council. And I see a lot of parents on. This is your way to to really have a say in what drives. Special education in North Brookfield. So I'd encourage you to 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 send me an email. I'd love to have you. In the committee and again, seeing all these people, both teachers and parents really is is very heartwarming.
Mark, can for anybody who a parent who's new or has never heard of him before, can you just quick description of what the sped pack is?
Yep. So so it it is a way for parents to advocate for for special education within the school system. And we it does a variety of things. It legislatively. Gives us ideas on what we should be doing, what direction we should be going on. It gives you an opportunity to have impact into how we set our programs. There's also a social aspect involved where there are certain events that that they put on and. So so for instance, one thing that's really going to be driven, we're finally getting off the grounds. We're going to be doing unified sports. And I really get a lot of support and help from the parents and putting things like that together. So so it really is a good way for you to advocate and and drive special education for our district. So. I highly encourage any and all of you to be involved in it and you just have to send me a little email and and we'll get the ball going.
And your e- your email is your initial.
It's mminucci@nb schools dot org. And Minucci's on the screen, I think, if you look at.
It's also on the website, too.
So the other thing that Sarah and I were talking about this today, it is we're doing extended school year and I can't tell you. Like how it's warmed my heart to see students back on campus. It is just. To me, it's just been fantastic. So we get to see those smiling faces and. We got into this business to interact with students and and when I interviewed for this position, one of the real appealing. Parts of being in North Brookfield is even as director, you get a lot of interaction with students. And and I and I want to tell you that I'm so glad that Mr. Lynn had the courage and also the planning to make sure that it was safe. To to let us go forward with having an in-person extended school year. So we're learning a lot from this and and I think it's helping the committee. I think it's helping the process. I think it's helping all of us. And getting ready for for whatever we're going to be seeing in the fall. So again, there's been a lot of positives. But we're also seeing some of the challenges. So we we had we had three students that whose parents did not want to send them to the to the extended school year in person. So that's why I do like the hybrid model. What we have taken is is an approach to have three days on, one day as a remote. So it has given us an opportunity to to reach those students who who can't come in every day. So so what we are doing though is we are. We are doing things with them every single day. So if they're remote, it's not just the one day a week. But the teacher's allowed to kind of focus. I heard a couple of times things brought up about, you know, that that one-to-one interaction or that or that direct interaction. There's allowing the teachers an opportunity to do that as well. As far as transportation goes, interesting, we're kind of seeing like some of the potential. Challenges and opportunities in transportation. Right now, we have a maximum of two students on the on the on the van. So what what challenge that creates is that, you know, it's about time on learning and especially in special education, you're you're held to meeting. The service delivery time to the best of your ability. So when 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 you when you have transportation challenges, it definitely affects that. So. So again, these are things that 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 we're able to to look at and and see how we're going to work out when when the fall occurs. So so overall, again, it's been a real positive experience. We're 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 benchmarking kids as best we can. I also want to give a real big kudos to. To two people that are on this call, two teachers, Ellen Davenport and Robyn Pratt. Both of of them are stepping up. It's summertime and and they're in constant contact with us, giving us ideas on on what we need to do. They're reaching out to parents and students. On their own time and this spirit of cooperation is is occurring during the summer and and I applaud them for that. It it it's it's been really helpful. So that the last thing I'm going to say is that we are also doing some services in the summer for from some students that although they don't have extended year services on their IP. We felt that that it made sense to to have them work with their individual specialists. So. In most summers, we don't have OT, occupational therapy or physical therapy. We have both of those this summer. We also added some hours on speech and language. So I took up way more time than I should have, but extended year school year is is going well and I think it's a highlight of 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 special education in the in the environment that we're in right now.
No, no worries. Thanks for sharing all that. And I I think also it probably is going to help inform how things will work in the fall when all the kids come back. Hopefully. Ms. Powers, a second update from you.
Thank you. This is my teaching and learning update for curriculum. So want to let the school committee know this was a year for our federal entitlement grants to be evaluated. It's called the program monitoring review.
I'm sorry, can can you just for those people who don't know what the federal entitlement grant?
Yep. So there we received three grants from the federal government based on the demographics in North Brookfield. And so. Each year we get an allocation of money that we basically say what we're going to spend it on. And then we follow through with kind of what we're spending it on, how we're spending it and coordinate with private schools in the area as well. So this this year was our. Program review and it happens every three years and we were approved. Everything went well. We completed it and it was accepted. So. In three more years, we'll get this review again. But. We also, as Mr. Lynn had said earlier in the meeting, our allocations for our entitlement grants have come out. They're very similar to what we've received last year. We use those funds to offset things that we put in our local budget. So things like partial salaries. And supplies and materials that relate to some of our programs. And then finally, on my report is just an update for professional development this coming year. We're going to be doing by by the nature of what the situation we're in. A lot of professional development, professional learning kind of day-to-day and on the job, but we do have our PD pods, which are cohorts. Of educators who pick a topic and they for the professional development days during the school year, which are the full days and half-days, they focus in on these topics. And I'm pleased to say that this year all of our groups will be run by in-house educators. So faculty who have stepped up to kind of take the lead on things such as. Readers and Writers Workshop, math instruction, breathe for change, using data in the classroom. Looking at restorative practices, supporting students with high needs and using Chromebooks in the classroom. So I'm super excited for those groups to. To get thinking, not only on kind of their goal in general of how to improve teaching and learning in those areas, but how it relates to. Where we are with teaching right now. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Mrs. O'Hara is not here. But I think, Rich, can you just give a summary of her? Her.
Covers like I went over earlier, the the new devices that we had. Her end of the year SIMs report has been certified, which is a huge job. She has three more to do that I do at various times over the summer. This is all speak recording. It's just. A month. And so for her to be done with one is great. The other three over the next couple of months. And then lastly, we are in the process of the updating and upgrading our infrastructure. For example, we went, we increased our bandwidth. Basically, the lines into the building are improving. We're also adding additional access points to improve coverage within the building. There are dead spots in the building where you can't get Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi is not. All key enough to handle the number of people. All that's being upgraded. As part of some of our federal relief money partially and mostly the federal E-Rate program. Technology grant that's given out yearly for things like that. So. A lot of great work to make technology work better for our staff and for our kids.
Thank you. I know she's been she must have been doing a huge amount of work the past six months. I appreciate everything that she's been doing. Mr. Shaw, you've been very patient.
All right. Mine's a little portion and thanks, Sarah, for noticing the paint painting that's been done and hopefully we'll get to more of it as as time goes on here. Of course, our, you know, our guys, my guys are are working hard. Of course, our, you know, our guys, my guys are, are working hard on getting the, getting the buildings ready. And the, the high school is, is for the most part done, which is a good thing. Now we're, you know, we're concentrating primarily in the elementary school. But you know, it's, it's kind of, it's been real eye-opening, I guess, for, at least personally for me to be involved with the, with the different task force and the admin team and, you know, everybody working hard to, to come up with, to answer all. Like Rich says, we come up with, we come up with one answer and we get, you know, I don't know how many more questions. So to all you guys, you know, kudos and it's, it's great to work with this team and, and, you know, it's, it, we're going to get there eventually, just gonna, it'll take a little bit. But anyway, again, thanks. We, we have tested out our new lawnmower. Been able to, to do that. So thanks to the town for approving that again. And we look forward to, right now, we're going to keep the other mower just as, as it goes until we found some quirks maybe with the new one that it doesn't quite hold the, the hill over by the soccer field as, as much as I had hoped. As, as Dave says, it's a little narrow, you know, it's hard to hold. So anyway, either hand or there, the old mower.
Any sports car, right? A little pinicky.
Yeah. So other than that, it's, you know, we're just plugging away, getting things done and, and, you know, being ready for school and making, making plans. Actually met with the staff today and, you know, kind of ran, went over the different things for summer and, and, you know, what we're doing all for the, for the summer program and how that's kind of basically kind of morph into what the fall, you know, could look like. There again, you know, my guys, my crew had pretty much the same, you know, what if, what if, what if, what if? And, you know, so we have a lot of that and, and just as much here, there as we do here. So anyway, kudos to them for working through these wonderfully cool days we're having right now. And of course, we could be down in New Mexico or wherever. So we'll, we'll take 90 versus 100 and whatever. But anyway, thank you and.
But it's a dry heat in New Mexico.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Sure. 110 still 110.
Um, thanks. And thank you very much. Please pass on our thanks to your staff for everything.
I will.
And for those of you that are still hanging on, we're getting there. We're getting there. The next portion is the old business of the bus contract.
Yeah. So just as a reminder, the, the district put out a, we got a one bid from AA Transportation, which the school committee accepted. Now we need to finalize the contract. I know we're not in person, but technically we need to do other than sign the contract. So I'm going to sign it and ask if you have a good big time at some point in the coming days. We try to stop by and, and put their signature on both the special certification and the regular bus contract for the next few years. Once it's all signed, I'll be able to send a copy back to AA Transportation. It's nice to have this wrapped up. In terms of the contract itself, we did, but I hope to have a chance to look at it. But session five talks about if there was any school closures, what we would do. Because as you remember, we had to negotiate that on behalf of this year. So what we did was we essentially agreed that we would follow the same process that we did with the springtime in terms of payment for the bus company. If there are closure days due to government shutdown or act of God kinds of things that, where school cannot be made up. Typically, we make those days up. Obviously, when we close, there was no way that those, all those days would be made up. So that's the only big piece that I'd want to make the committee aware of. It was pretty straightforward with AA Transportation, who has done a really nice job. It has been very, very easy to work with. I appreciate their, their time and their commitment. That's it.
Thank you for the update. So we don't have any policy updates. So what do we skip A just now? Cause I think the other, well, just do B and, B and C there real quick. Cause I think we can get through them quicker and then we'll go back to A. And thank you, Sophia, for being patient. Sorry.
So fall athletics, there's a working group with the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association because fall sports are here. So I've invited Mr. Sloan, our athletic director, to join us. I believe the MIA actually issued a statement today. Kevin, is that true? Did you have a chance to see that?
Yeah, that's correct. They're looking to make some kind of announcement tomorrow after some big powwow that they're going to have.
Yeah. So one of the, one of the suggestions was to have our athletic director join a school committee meeting just to talk about athletics and extracurriculars. And athletics is the biggest extracurricular activity. Just to kind of, if the committee had any questions or Kevin, have any thoughts you want to lead off with to share about especially fall sports.
Yeah. So there's been lots of rumors circulating that they were going to move the spring sports to the fall, the fall to the spring, do some kind of mixing up of sports, but right now nothing's been finalized. They are, the, the state earlier released that certain sports were high risk, moderate risk and low risk. But those were for youth and adult sports for the summer. The high school sports fall under the category of the National Federation of High School Sports. Their rankings are slightly different. So that will be into effect when the MIA makes their meeting tomorrow. They have a COVID-19 task force as well that has been polling ADs, superintendents, coaches, teachers. And they've been working off of some of that information. And one of the big proposals, it looks is the delay of the sport season will be September 14th. Now, I don't know if that's the first day for practices or the first day for games. And a lot of that stuff is still unclear.
Yeah, there's not a lot of answers, but I think the idea that we are waiting for guidance from the, from the MIA. The MIA has been in communication with, it's like reeducation, because there are separate groups. In terms of sports, my reading of the thing they issued today, Kevin, was that nothing would start till that September 14th date. That means workouts, tryouts, practices, et cetera. And that's if it actually happens. It's just they're delaying it, postponing it, starting. So that's my simple read of it. It could be incorrect. That affects a lot of kids and, you know, I would encourage parents and our coaches to reach out to students and let them know what's going on, so they're not out of the loop. You know, I don't, I don't know. They suggested to have these meetings because sports were supposed to start in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, the Thursday, how do they word it? The Thursday before the Thursday before Labor Day. So I believe that's like, that's like around October 20th. I mean, August 20th, something like that. Yeah.
So, you know, they suggested we have this meeting. I think the idea was that they would have more information by now. So it's not a lot to share, but I think just the sort of recognition that, that, you know, sports, extracurriculars are key part of any total school program. They often have questions about it. Just to let everybody know, those questions are in the process of being answered by people at a higher pay grade than me, you know, folks who, there's a variety of people on a task force. Kevin, anything else that you can think of about fall sports that, that you want to share with sort of parents?
Not at this time. We, we just don't know. I mean, I myself would love to see some sports get going again, but not at any risk to anyone. Where we have transportation issues with the school or questions about the school, we'd have those same transportation, transportation issues with sports. You know, how many kids can we put on a bus to go to an away game? Things like that. So there's just, until we get more guidance, it's really hard to even decide what, what we can and can't do.
Right. Yeah. And, and so you'll, you'll, you and I have stayed in touch. So as more information comes through you, we'll continue to talk and, and we'll share it out. I'd ask you to communicate with your coaches, ask your coaches to communicate with kids so that they're not in the, you know, so that they're in the loop and they have some idea of what's going on. But thank you for taking the time to pop in and give us an update.
Sure thing.
Thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
Good night, Kevin. Thanks.
Did you want to talk about the uniforms?
If you want to stay on, that would be great. We're going to get to that one.
Alright.
I didn't see Mrs. Doctor is a point five or, I mean, it's looking at seventeen and a half hours per week. Computer technician position. I included a job description in your packets. But essentially the idea that this, for those who have been on the committee a couple of years, they know the budgets have contained this position all three years that I've been superintendent. But this year is, it's really come, come to a point where we have to have this. We're adding 300 Chromebooks. We're adding 60 new iPads. The ability to keep all of this operating on one person is impossible. I would prefer to get some full-time, but I don't think we can afford it frankly right now, given the thing. But I do have identified some grant money that we received. It's actually some of the regional, the rural school aid money that we received last year. That was put aside. Actually, we were working towards a one-to-one program, but the one-to-one program got picked up by the, the CARES Act money. So it's made this money available for the year. We'll have to think about it for next year.
So this is, this is the money from the small rural schools grant that we get generally? Is that what you said? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We were going to use that money to move towards one-to-one, but now we traded that out for CARES Act money. So this money is sort of, I don't want to say unaccounted for. We don't have anything specifically now. The idea of having someone here three and a half hours a day to just fix stuff, support teachers, support kids, to help Cindy with network maintenance and all the things that go into keeping the world, our technology world going would be really important.
Yeah. I mean, obviously it's a position that is really needed. And since we have the funds for it, even if it's only for this year, I, I think that it's a great idea. I mean, it'd be great to have a full-time person, but even someone who's here at the school seventeen and a half hours is certainly going to make a big difference and help out Mrs. O'Hara and all the staff.
Are there any, are there any requirements for this? Or is it something where maybe there's a, a college student or someone who is going to school remotely? Cause their school's not opening for the fall and they could come in there.
The qualifications listed were, we're looking for someone with previous experience. That's preferred. That's not required. We do list an associate's degree or in a related field, but certainly would consider someone if they have some way to show an experience that would replace a college degree. You know, we're looking for someone who can help with technical issues, equipment repair, maintaining inventory and, and in general, just sort of be another person that we can connect with to get the million jobs done that are on the work order for technology that, that Cindy feels like she never really could get to, which she's trying to do. I pulled this strong description from several other districts, so.
So any other questions? So we, we do have to vote on it to approve it? So we need a motion?
I moved to approve a seventeen and a half hour a week position for, I forget what the technical name of it was. Your technician position. I moved to approve that.
I second. All in favor?
I.
Everybody for, for voting for, I assume? I think I saw hands and voices. Excellent. Mrs. Parker, do you want to do donations or move to?
Um, can actually, can I just take like 30 seconds? I'm sorry. I gotta get off of computer or off the.
So I'm just, while she is off, I'm going to.
Alright, here I am. Sorry.
She's back. I was just going to review the donations. The first is a printer from Vibram. Vibram has a high-end printer that Mrs. Harris has a printer. It's barely been used. They want to donate to us. So I don't have the specifics on it yet, but they're going to send them over. But Cindy did say it was a good one. So we certainly make use of that. And then the second donation was a pretty significant donation from a woman that North Brookfield High School, an older gentleman who has lived in Maine for many years in North Brookfield. Bought his, his roots in North Brookfield in the education yard. He left his estate as he passed on.
So I actually spoke to a couple of friends of his, so Mr. Cushing. He graduated in 1955 from the high school and I spoke to, and I'm blanking on their name right now. Help me out here, Debbie. Bishop, Bishop. Mr. and Mrs. Bishop. So Mrs. Bishop actually went to school with Mr. Cushing from first grade all the way through high school, although they did attend Catholic school in town for grammar school. She told me a little bit about him, that his father died when he was 13. He had a younger brother and at 13, he actually started, you know, working odd jobs to help his mother out and help support his family. And that, and I, I did look at his obituary. He, he joined the US Navy Reserves after he graduated from high school at North Brookfield. And he did live a lot of his, his life in Maine. But what was, what was interesting was Mrs. Bishop knew him at school, but she wasn't like good friends with them. But then they reconnected as, as the bishops and Mr. Cushing and his wife as adults and became very good friends and, and spent a lot of time together in Maine and Florida. And what she really expressed and also Mr. Bishop expressed was that he and his wife were extremely charitable people. They were very involved in the Kiwanis, which if you're familiar with the Kiwanis, their mission is to improve the lives of children. So they didn't have any children of their own, but very, very involved in all kinds of programs to support children that they actually very connected to a family in, I believe it was Arizona, on one of the Native American reservations out there. And, you know, just all sorts of wonderful things. So it's a really, really generous donation. I don't know if, if what Mr. Lynn said was clear, which is it's $12,236.40 from his estate. And there are no restrictions on it where the, the school is to use it as we see fit. So he apparently, because he was working when he was in high school, wasn't involved in a whole lot of activities. He did play basketball. So I, you know, I was trying to see if there's anything specific that he had a real love for, but it seemed like it really was what drove this donation was his own love for children and wanting to make life better for kids. Just really generous, amazing. I mean, we get a lot of really great donations, but just really heartwarming to get this from Mr. Cushing's estate. So there you go.
So those, those need to be approved? So those, those need to be approved.
So we need a motion to approve them. Can I? Oh, yeah, go, Tim. You go.
Debbie, you got, you beat me to it. You can.
Oh, I was literally just gonna say, can I move that we approve everything quickly? Both donations.
I second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Maria, thank you for sharing that obituary on Facebook today, too.
Um, actually, I didn't. I, I, I'm going to. Uh, I emailed it to you guys, but I am gonna share it on Facebook, too.
The email world and the, and the Facebook.
Yeah, I know, it all, all one big digital thing, right? Um, so our, this is actually our last item in the meeting, which is, and I'd just like to say. Um, Ms. Hassan Fuss, did I say that right? Hassan Fuss, yeah, okay. Um, very patient. She's been here since the beginning. Um, and so she is here to present a petition from a group of Northbrook Field alumni. So why don't you please, uh, let us begin?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for, uh, having, letting us join you. Uh, there's a few other people who signed the petition here also. Um, and so I also just want to say, no, it's a long, rough night, so I appreciate all of the decisions that you all are having to make. Hopefully, this will be an easier decision, fingers crossed. Um, I can send the letter to the chats that I don't have to read the whole thing, but essentially. Um, uh, the letters from alum and some current students as well, and some parents of students, uh, regarding. The Indians mascot, um, and just the perpetuation of negative stereotypes about Indigenous people. Through having mascots such as these, and I know people really cling to history and tradition and, um. I just want to say certainly from my experience, I graduated in ninety-nine, so, um, you know, in all the years I was at Northbrook Field. I don't think we ever learned anything about Indigenous people from having this mascot. I think that it, we have clearly heard from the Nippon Tribal Council in twenty sixteen. They had a unanimously supported letter asking that all schools in Massachusetts. Stop using, uh, stereotypes of Native Americans and all of their mascots. Um, and I think that's, we can take that as a directive to say that. You know, it's been asked of us and now's the time, and even though it's a rough time and a rough moment in history, it's also a really important moment in history to be. Sort of paying attention to the messages that we're sending our students and, um, our children, so. I'm happy to answer anyone's questions about it, but I'll send out the letter into the chat so people can read it.
Does anyone have any questions?
I would like to say something about it. Um, I am a McBack and probably one of very, very small groups of people who actually have tribal affiliations in Northbrook Field. And this has been a huge concern of mine and for my children for a really long time, so I just want to say thank you so much for whoever, whatever organization brought this petition. To the attention of the school committee. Um, I didn't even know about it. I wish I did, or I would have helped gather more support for it, so please share. More information and letters and I will happily, um, help you get more attention for this issue. It's a huge issue. Our school also still widely celebrates Columbus Day, um, and lots of other things that do not align well with. Um, being an Indian mascot either. Um, it's something I really hope the school board will. Have a serious discussion about, um, and I brought it up a few years ago when there was grants, um, helping schools change mascots. Uh, I'm wondering if there's still grants available. Um, it would be something that'd be really important and significant, I think, for our town to look into.
So, um, I want to say that I really appreciate that people brought the petition forward and, um, it's not, you know, you. Uh, Sophia, you sat through this entire meeting, so you, you know what we're dealing with right at this moment.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not to say that this is not an important issue and it's not something that Northbrook Field Public Schools needs to grapple with. Um, but in speaking to other committee members, what, um, we sort of came to consensus with is that we want to accept your petition. Um, tonight, we are not going to, you know, make any sort of motion or anything like that, but we will, we'll have the petition and then, you know, in the next couple of months, we can, you know. Looking at what other school districts have done, taking a little bit of time and listen to people's points of view and then go forward to, um. Uh, with whatever it is that we decide to do or don't decide to, so.
Where does this stand in the state?
Discussions and legislation.
So there was a, um, there was a bill that was actually filed. It was filed in January of twenty nineteen, I believe. Um, it's not been voted on. I don't think it's gone any, any, it hasn't like progressed any more recently. But that doesn't mean that it's not going to. Um, I also think that. Personally, I'd rather see Northbrook Field do something without having the state decide for us. I would rather that we decide for ourselves. So, and I know there's, there's a lot of concern. Um, I want to say personally, as someone who has raised a lot of money for the, for the Northbrook School through the PTO. You know, the very small group of people that raise money for the sports boosters, and actually, that's where all of our uniforms come from. Um, so just to acknowledge that, um. Well, first of all, hey, there's no, there would be no money for new uniforms, no money to replace, um, flooring in the gym that has a large. Indian mascot head on it. So, let me, let, let me finish, Tashina, okay? It's not to say that we wouldn't. You know, it's something that I think we, we need a little bit of process to go into it, um, before we, you know, can say what's gonna happen, so. Just, just because there's a lot going on. And I know that's not the answer you probably wanted to hear, but. Does anyone else have any comments?
That, I understand that completely because it's chaos right now. I really, really do. However, what about raising money? Wouldn't we be able to. Come up with ideas to raise the money, give us an idea of the cost? I know there's some. Things out there that give us some numbers of what it would cost to replace these things and, and, and change these things, but. I mean, it is pretty doable, I think, because I think we have a, a good backing and I think the further we reach out. And then it could be a thing, like if we really did want to bring awareness and, and really support and really, you know, show our pride and love for. The Indigenous people, wouldn't, couldn't we do something on a yearly basis? Through the town or the school to, you know, have a five K every year and raise money and really show support and. You know, raise money different ways. I just think.
Yeah, no, I, you know, just in, I'm looking, you know, I've talked to some other, um, representatives from other school committees and, and a lot of them, what they did was that. It, it was, it was basically, if, if, well, first of all, depending on what happens, okay? You know, we, we do need to have a little bit of a process, but oftentimes what happens is things are phased out as they are, they are replaced. So it's not like you have to raise whatever, twenty thousand dollars at once or something like that, but. Um, I certainly absolutely support anybody who wants to help raise money and support the schools, so. So I think what I wanted to say tonight was I appreciate people bringing the petition forward. Um, it's not something that we can go forward with tonight, you know, immediately to give any kind of answer. Um, but that it is something that we will be considering. And if any other school committee members have something else you want to say. I'm not the only voice there, so.
No, I.
I just want to say, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that it's something we're definitely gonna talk about and have a discussion about. We're not saying like. We're putting it on the backboard or not gonna talk about it and not gonna make a decision about it.
I, I agree with Ruth. This is, it's, I think it has to be a dialogue where we can acknowledge that it, something, some action needs to be taken. And I think that maybe as, as we go forward, we can work with you to plan this out, because right now, there's really, we don't have. I mean, I, I, I love making motions here, but I, I don't have a specific to make a motion about, because we don't. You know, we can't just declare ourselves to now be something else. It's not really in our capacity at this point, but. I think this starts the dialogue as, as a committee with you and, and the other members of the petition. And we could talk about fundraising and actually put together more of a plan before it becomes something that. You know, I can really proudly make a motion about, this, this, as our end goal here, but I think it needs to be a dialogue and put some planning into effect. But Maria's goal for tonight was to acknowledge the petition. And say that we are going to do something and we will engage with you on this, but it's just, we can't do it right now. It's, we have to figure out how to open the school and things like that, and this, this gives us some time to have that discussion.
Is there any way that we can make a motion to add it to another meeting to start a subcommittee? To, you know, maybe explore the idea rather than making a decision?
So, Tashina, and speaking to other, um, school committee members who have been through this, and there's a, actually, a fair number of them in Massachusetts that have recently gone through this, is generally, is, there's a. You know, there's a, a couple of sort of public forums and opportunities for people to speak and, you know, you know, share their opinions. It can become very contentious, as I'm sure you're aware, um, so we want to make sure that everybody is, you know, respectful of one another and, and their opinion. So I, 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 um, I don't think we need a subcommittee. I think it's on all of our minds. It'll end up being on the agenda, maybe. I, I don't want to say August, just because starting school really is number one right now. Um, and I, I want to talk to the other school committee members, um, but, you know, um. My, you know, my guarantee is that we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna come up again soon, okay?
As a tangent, also with the regionalization stuff that's going on, we may not be an Indian forever anyway. So they could segue or. It's, you know, it could eliminate itself, and I think that if any of you who started this petition. Knew the majority of the people on the committee, this is something that we take seriously. Serious, like, for, speaking as myself, I'm not, I didn't grow up here, but I'm not super psyched to have a mascot that. Upsets other people who have more of a right to it than I do. Um, so it will be discussed. Maybe regionalization takes care of it, maybe. Um, I just think it's one of those crazy climates and times that people aren't being kind to each other and. People can't have grown-up conversations about anything, so let's reopen school and then bring up. Topics that will be hard for people to digest. But I do think it's important.
And I appreciate the, you know, Sophia sent us another copy of the petition that has more signatures and, you know, certainly. The more support you gather, the better, you know, so.
Oh, Mrs. Tucker, I just, you had, you'd asked me to follow up on a couple of things.
Yes.
My, my, um, research on the floor was the gym floor to. Twenty-five thousand, depending on what we're able to do to it, in some cases.
You, uh.
Paint over.
You completely cut out there. How much?
Ten to twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Depending on what they could do, either paint over it or do they have to sand it? It just depends what they could do with the professionals.
Okay.
Uh, the signs out front would be anywhere from fifteen hundred to five thousand dollars to replace, depending on the type of sign we get. And what we want on there. Both the electronic sign and the wooden sign have, uh, the same Native American head mascot on it.
So I'm sorry, you said, you said twenty-five thousand, I'm, I'm gonna go with the higher number.
Twenty-five for the floor, uh, like fifteen hundred to five thousand for the signs out the front of the campus.
Okay.
And then uniforms. Kevin, do you have, are you still there? Were you able to hang in?
Yep, I'm here. So the, the girls' basketball team, I believe, bought new uniforms last year and for home and away, it was three grand, so they're. Figure of ba, boys' basketball, cross-country, field hockey. Some of the ones have home and away, some don't. You're looking at anywhere from two to three grand per team. We have eleven varsity teams, so we're talking what, twenty-five to?
And then you gotta replace any of, uh, JV or others that have the same.
Right. We have five, five sub-varsity teams. They don't necessarily all need home and away, but, you know, you're still looking at a good chunk of change. Not all of our uniforms have an Indian logo or the word Indians on it. Some say Northbrook Field, so we would have to go through it each sport and really decide which ones could stay and go.
If it doesn't say Indians on it, we don't need to replace it.
Correct.
You know, and doesn't have the patch of something, you know.
Right.
The, of the mascot, but, um, that would be good to know if you could get that to me at some point. Just so that we can have sort of a, what do we need to do? So those are the big costs that we were, we were able to sort of, uh. Identify. I'm sure there are other costs that would, um. Come up, so just so people have a general sense of what the costs are.
Just a thought, what, what about like a shop? What about the kids? Like the floor as opposed to, like the floor and the sign, wouldn't, wouldn't that be?
We don't have a shop.
One more.
But then, it brings up, it brings up, what about Ba, Ba House? Do they have a wood, do they have a one, I don't know if they have a shop that is, would do.
I don't know if they do that. I can find out, certainly.
You know, this is just, you know.
Just ideas, just thoughts.
Are you, it's Corey, your name, or are you Karen?
Yes, I'm Corey.
Okay, uh, because I got a Karen over there with messages and you're saying the same thing, which is fundraising is a possibility. I think, I just wanted to know the amount of money.
The, the, yeah, right.
That's all, and that's why I asked Mr. Lynn to look at it, so, but. That's all, and, um, and, and again, thank you for bringing the petition forward and we, we'll, we will, I mean, like Debbie said, we're not, we're not gonna just say, we're gonna. We're gonna talk about it and then I'll talk about it. We will, so. And I know, I, I'm asking you to be patient when maybe it would, you'd rather not, so, but I, I appreciate your patience, so.
There's like a magic wand that can be waved to make it magically suddenly not the Indians. I know it's been a fight in years past as well. Um, I just think that it's, um, yeah, important to be brought up and I don't, I don't think like it would be decided in this moment. But that, like, commitment to really grappling with it is important.
Yes, I agree, and actually, I'm gonna, gonna say what Tashina says, is I would love to, uh. To see some really great, uh, educational programming about, you know, Native Americans and the, uh. Mashin Tugat Pequot Museum actually does a lot of stuff, so. Maybe we can fundraise to bring them when they reopen, so, so, alright, thank you. Does, any other comments or?
I don't want to comment.
Yep.
Oh, my name is Jenna Wright Smith. Um, I graduated in ninety-four. Um, and I just want to say, I think one piece that we can use. You know, I, again, I just was through this meeting too, and I, and I, I'm a social worker. I work with children and adolescents and I, I've seen the impact this has had. By this, I mean the pandemic on, on our communities, on, you know, I work with schools, I work with pediatricians and everybody is. Struggling and it's, it's a hard, hard moment, but I also think of it as the perfect moment to be talking about these things because I feel like our. Everything has been so shaken up, you know, like all of our, our values, what's important to us, importance of community, that all of that is being brought. In front of us right now, and, um, you know, that's kind of why these sorts of conversations are going on, so just to, to think about that. And, and again, I'm completely understanding, hearing you that, you know, you've got to, you've got to do logistics, you got to do. You know, how are we getting back into school and all that stuff is, is incredibly important, but I think for me, what gets us through these kinds of times. Is our values and, and what matters and, and, um, you know, not everybody might agree with this value, but I think. You know, people who really understand and think about the history and think about the impact on Indigenous people today and how it, um. How it really does affect the mental health of Indigenous children, um, you know, to be stereotyped and, um, char. You know, sort of caricatures of, of, of this, you know, blanket statement, Indian, um. That can actually be, get, you know, um, a force for moving forward and, and having. Um, hoping change and things getting better, so that's just something I wanted to add in. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Rigging.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's also really important that we engage the students in this one. I'd hate to see something like this be really driven from the adults down. Um, you know, as educators, our job is to really kind of, um, to give, give the chance to, to have a voice and to, to make change. Uh, as we've seen that happen, you know, over the last few years, um, with student advocacy, I think this would be a very important way to get them involved. And, and let them have a stake in, in the decision.
Absolutely. Actually, I, uh, Ruth actually told me today that, uh, last year, the, the, the history, social studies teacher had the eighth graders research, the. research the bill that's, um, before the state legislature and, and debated. And I'm actually really curious to, if it was possible to see what they came up with. I was really curious.
Yeah, they all had to write their opinion at the end, what they thought, if it should be changed, and if it was changed, what they thought it should be changed to, so. It'd be interesting if Mr. Doros could share those with us.
I, I lived in Harwich for a couple of years and the students actually named and then a student designed the logo for the school when they, when they regionalized, they, they became a new region. And it was a student-designed logo that went on everything, on the gym floors and all that stuff.
Neat. That's very cool. All right, before we adjourn and then have to go do an executive session, is there anything else? All right. Mr. Lynn, you were gonna say something?
No, no, Mr. Rigby, uh, tried to come in and I think I cut him off, so I wanted to make sure he had a chance.
All right. So, uh, Debbie, you're up. We gotta, oh, actually, does someone, anyone remember how to read the, to go into an executive session? I've forgotten that. Oh, it's right here. Okay, so if you're looking at the agenda, we need to adjourn the regular session and then go into an executive session and number fifteen is, uh, what we need to read, so. Anybody looking at the agenda? Penny?
Am I just reading that thing that we are not adjourned, pointing to recess to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation? Position of the public body and the chair, so declares, is that what I'm reading?
Yeah.
Yep, and not to return to, uh, regular session.
So we're adjourned in the regular session and moving into executive session.
Right, with the idea of not returning to regular session.
The idea of not returning to regular session.
You got it.
I miss Kristen so much.
I usually read that part, but I don't have the paper with me, so.
All right, well, thank you all for spending the entire two and a half hours there. Appreciate it. And, uh, next month, we'll see you.
Maria, Maria, we need a second and a roll call, though.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I second that.
All in favor? Oh, we have to, uh, roll call, so say your name and, uh, yeah.
Debbie, I'm here. I'm sorry, Ruth.
Ruth Honsom, yes.
Tim Canada, yes.
Marie Bider Tucker, yeah.
Is everybody else gone?
Nope.
No, there's not.
We got Jenna and Jamie.